This conference will now be recorded.
At this time, I'd like to call the special committee of the whole meeting to order. Let the record reflect, it is Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, at 7:05 PM. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation in Public Act 101-0640, which amends requirements of the Open Meetings Act due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Pursuant to the same, the Village Board finds that it would be impractical to conduct an in-person meeting with all members present. I would ask at this time that the elected officials confirm that they can hear one another.
Can everybody hear?
This is Trustee Mueller, yes.
This is our Trustee Galante, yes.
This is Trustee Berg, yes.
Great, thank you. All the meeting, all the materials for this meeting are available on the Village's website, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted. After members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. Once I, the Chair, has a list of public commenters, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them six minutes for their comment. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email to theclerksoffice@tinnipark.org, or by placing their written request in the Dropbox at Village Hall to participate publicly via a live telephone call to the relevant portion of the public meeting. The public was provided the opportunity to submit written comments until noon today by emailing their public comments to clerksoffice@tinnipark.org, or by placing their written comment in the Dropbox at the Village Hall. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by the roll call vote. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Berg.
Yes, here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Present.
Trustee Glotz.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
President Vandenberg.
He's not on the line.
Okay.
Item number two, consider approval of the minutes of special committee of the whole meeting held on June 9th. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Trustee Brennan. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Berg.
Can I have the here, did you say Trustee Berg?
Yes, roll call for consider approval of the minutes of the special committee of the whole meeting held on June 9th, 2020. Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item three, discuss test documentation service for fire and life safety systems. Chief Ried, who's going to take this one?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Yes, good evening, everybody, hope everyone can hear me. Let me give you a summary of what we're trying to do here. The way the quotes are written, we are required to see all testing documentation for any life safety system that's installed in the village. So, we are the ones, we're the gatekeeper of all the information. That comes out about 1,200 pieces of document a year. What we're working on is a third-party provider that will help us coordinate the program, the documents, and basically be that front person to get the documents to us so that we can do our evaluation of whatever documents are submitted. What we expect to get out of it is continue to streamline our costs and controlling the cost. The big thing is we want to reduce our, any violations or any type of citations as a result of lack of documentation for these types of systems. We have identified two main vendors that provide this type of service in a web-based format. One is inspection reports online called IRL, and the other is a compliance engine. The Chicago-based companies, they have clients nationwide, but they, companies like this would work as an agent for us and really do the legwork of getting the documentation, whether it's by mailing, email, whatever we actually design for them, and then they carry that out based on what our needs are. We had went out and solicited some contractors and other jurisdictions, and over 90% had preferred a company called Dreyser. They have, their technology is a little bit, I think, more robust, and they've gotten a real good feedback from the, from the, from other HJs and contractors. The cost, the village doesn't see any cost. There is no cost to the village regarding this program. The cost is borne between the relationship of the third party and the contractor, and that is usually about $15 per test report, and that is something that is strictly that agreement with the contractor and this third party. The agreement that they signed with the village is basically giving them authorization to work with us as an agent to get the paperwork together for us. So, if we were to fully implement this program, we'd be looking at, we're looking at a village and staff review of the agreements and putting data together and getting that to the end to the third party, making sure that our property owners that have life safety systems are, clearly understand the impact, if any, and really making sure we adjust our criteria based on how we're doing it now versus how we plan on doing it six months down the road when it's fully implemented. So, it's really a good thing, it keeps us moving forward. We're going to be doing less paperwork and more of the, more of the evaluation of the documents, and I think that's a good thing for everybody. So, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone?
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Ried?
Trustee Glotz, this is Trustee Galante, I do.
Go ahead, Diane.
Thank you. Just to understand this, so is this a service you guys are currently doing out of the firehouses? Services?
Right, currently, we are gathering all the documents, and we are enforcing and requesting documents when we do our inspections. What this will do is take, take the initial legwork and put it in a third-party, hands of a third-party who will be making the phone calls and the documentation. So, it still comes to us for final evaluation. We are getting somebody to do the clerical and admin work upfront for us.
Is that, that's good, how much do you think that'll save a lot of time for you guys, for that amount, for the work that they're going to do?
Well, yeah, I think the big thing for us is we're going to be, we're going to be having less violations, and that in and of itself is the time savings that we expect to see as part of the impact. So, we will see something on the back end as far as contacting property owners, but I think the big thing is that we'll have compliance a lot quicker.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions for Chief Ried?
Thank you, Chief.
So, this, this is Mike, can I go, class?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
So, the compliance engine is, seems to be the preferred vendor by the fire department right now. I noticed they also have the backflow kind of registration process as well. I don't know, this is a question for Pat or for somebody else, do we look at kind of consolidating our vendors on these things to help just kind of overall kind of manage our vendor list?
I think that, that to me is, at this point, I think we're now looking at differences and, and, and expertise. I think down the road, I think there should be an opportunity, but with the backflow, that's more of a plumbing regulation versus this, this fire and life safety. I think that would be a long-term goal, to have it under, have it under one umbrella. I like to, this product's been out about 10 years, and I've been watching it very carefully to where we're at the point where I think we need to, we need to move forward on it, and I think this, if we like what we see, I think getting together with public works and seeing if we can bring it up all under one, one vendor, I think that's the right thing to do. I think we're ready for it.
No, I think that makes sense, and I appreciate your response there.
Sure.
And then, it said, you know, 12 to 16, $15 to $16 per test, and I know those, that cost gets passed on, but how many tests do we do annually?
Well, right now, if we use what we bring in annually for what we do, it's about 1,200.
Okay.
So, if you use that as, if we use that as a guide, that's what, what the third-party would be charging a contractor. We're not sure, but we're confident that contractors are going to put past this cost on, but they already probably are doing administrative fee because they're sending that same document to us anyway. So, I'm thinking that the $15 that may get passed on is probably already happening in most cases.
Yeah. And then, there's no, we would do the initial migration, for lack of a better term, and get them the test documents that we have right now, and they'd kind of do a bulk load of all that stuff, and then I'd assume as new tests are required, that's when they kind of fully take over?
Right, it's every bit, if day one, if today was day one, we're looking at 180 days to where things would be almost running as we would expect.
Gotcha.
So, it's going to take a little bit of time, but it's, the transition is, it does take time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No more questions from me. Chair Glotz.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Chief, for putting this together, it's a pretty impressive list of municipalities they service. So, what are you, what are you looking for us to do then, just move it to the board for you?
Actually, I wanted to see what questions you might have had. We're going to continue to move forward as we look at the agreements and get that passed through wherever we need to go with the village, our legal staff. I just wanted to make sure you understood what we are trying to accomplish here, and if there are any red flags that may have come up from your perspective that we need to address. Otherwise, we're going to keep moving forward and to the next step, which is really the agreements and making sure that it meets, that the Tinni Park's protected.
Thanks, Chief. I think from the comments from the board, seems like everyone wants you to keep moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Yeah, thank you.
Item number four, discuss annual maintenance and inspection of village facilities HVAC units contracts. John, you want to take that one?
Yes, sir, thank you, good evening. This is an annual service contract for our HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units. It is encompassing seven different facilities in the village and overall 36 different types of units. It entails four different inspections throughout the year. If you have your contract in front of you, you can see it's very entailed in what's being covered by this contract. We've utilized Murphy &amp; Miller for upwards of 10 years now, I believe, for these inspections, and it definitely has shown an addition of the lifetime of the units. One of the main important things is the greasing of the bearings and changing of the filters more time than we have available. So, it's definitely justified expense for the maintenance of the facilities. Asking for a contract approval of $25,809.65, and this is budgeted for this year.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John Erpansky?
This is Trustee Brennan. I have one quick question for John. John, what's, when was the last time we bid this out? I know you said that we've had them for the last 10 years, and I know they've obviously been satisfactory, but have we bid this out in the last couple of years?
As a maintenance contract, when it was first initially released, we did have multiple quotes, but now having, you know, the ongoing satisfactory service from this company, we haven't put it out in a while. But again, you know, you may get a lower bid contractor, but you know, some of this stuff has to do with institutional knowledge and trying to get a contractor with, you know, a little bit of savings, you may end up losing in the serviceability.
Sure.
Again, we're not opposed to it, but you know, they've proven to work well for us in years past, and we're just going off of an existing contract here.
Okay. No, that's fine, I obviously don't want to rock the boat on that, I'm just curious to see how recent we actually looked at it, so, but if they're doing a good job, we don't see any reason to make a change.
I don't have it here, how much did the rates change? How much more have they charged compared to the last contract?
That's a good question. I do not have last year's contract in front of me, but I do not believe it was much different than what this is. The only rate changes that I'm familiar with are when we have newer units installed, it adjusts the required maintenance, or if we have, you know, like with the new firehouse, obviously that's going to change our maintenance contract for next year because we've added a bunch more units than was on the previous contract. So, they are, they are kind of prorated based on the number of units, you know, that is in each contract. Again, if you, if you look at the attachment, you can see each facility is listed individually, and we're paying on a prorated cost per facility and per unit.
Well, it's understandable, it has to go up a little bit every year, obviously. All right, thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to move it to the board. I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Roll call vote for item four, Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, discuss update to sexual harassment policy Workplace Transparency Act. Dave Niemeyer.
Sure, thank you, Trustee Glotz. So, a few years ago, the state mandated that our sexual harassment policy be formally codified, which we did, we've had in place a number of years, we did formally codify it. There was also some additional amendments made by the state that now requires that we have mechanisms for reporting any investigation of harassments made by one elected official against another. So, this ordinance in front of you, and that's on the board agenda tonight, simply codifies that, it allows for independent review, and it's simply, we're doing this to make sure we follow the state statutes.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for the board? I'll make a motion to move it to the board. I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Bill. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Roll call vote for item five, Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, discuss health care insurance broker renewal. Dave?
Sure. Three years ago, we did a RFQ for health insurance broker services. We awarded the contract to Lion Medro for three years. They've done a very good job for us these last three years. Our recommendation this year is rather than going for new RFQ is to add one more year onto the contract. They are requesting some relatively minor changes to the commission that would increase the medical from 0.9% to 1%, and also 1% for dental. What that turns out in terms of dollars is roughly about $7,000 for the village, which is still well under our previous broker commissions, which were over, which was in six figures. So, we would recommend that we do this again for a year, we can evaluate next year whether we want to do an RFQ, but we think they've done a good job, and we recommend that we do this. As a reminder, our plan year is up October 1st, so they're already starting to work on the insurance renewal, so we do need to really do this at this meeting to make sure we get our renewal numbers and on a timely basis, which should become to the board late July, early August.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to move it to the Village Board for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Bill. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Roll call vote for item six, Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item seven, discuss setting the date, time, and place for the JRV meeting and public hearing for proposed 159th and Harlem Tiff District. Andrew, can you take that one, please?
Thank you. This is the next step in the process for the proposed Tiff District at 159th and Harlem Avenue. This process began in March when the board authorized staff to work with Stern Brothers to develop a redevelopment plan that included a feasibility analysis and eligibility study. The notices were provided at that time to all the impacted taxing districts, as well as published notice in the Daily South Town. The plan was recently made available to the Village Board, it's the village residents as well as businesses and interested parties on the Village website on June 3rd, and was formally announced at the rescheduled June 2nd board meeting, which took place on June 9th. Staff is recommending that we move this ordinance forward to set the date, time, and place for the joint review board meeting, where the interested parties, taxing bodies, and residents and businesses could discuss the proposed Tiff District, as well as setting the public hearing date for this as well, again, to get input from the public and interested parties on this item, and staff recommends moving this to the board.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions from the board?
Mayor Protem Glotz, this is Trustee Berg, may I have the floor?
Yes, go ahead, Cindy.
Hi, I just wanted to point out, I was looking at February 27, 2018, we seem to have decided we would do a 7B on the Kmart, Aldi, Applebee's, and former Country Buffet, and I was hoping that we could perhaps just do this in a couple of the areas, instead of the whole Tiff District that's being created. You can't guarantee those spur developments that would otherwise occur using these exemptions. I mean, the Kmart's already got the peat, bandanas is opening without any incentive, the Brixmor property was never improved by the owners when it had TJ Maxx, Women's Workout World, Famous Footwear, and all the other stuff that was there before the downturn in the economy anyways. So, I would really want to consider that we could just do the sevens on a couple of these buildings.
So, the difference?
Is there any reason why Brixmor was not included in having a seven ever?
Well, the seven, the 7B in a Tiff District are two different items, in that the 7B benefits-
That's correct.
... benefits the property owner by lessening their tax exposure, where the Tiff District generates, is an economic development tool to generate funding that can be used not just for that specific business, how a 7B is singular, but the Tiff District would be able to improve our infrastructure and utilities throughout those areas, as well as, you know, other areas within the full boundary of the Tiff map. So, it's a larger-scale redevelopment tool than a 7B, which is more individualized.
Also, I-
That's exactly my point, the infrastructure is already there. This is not an area that would be eligible for a Tiff.
So, hold on, Dave, can you hold on a second? Brad, I think I heard you on the line, is that you?
Yes, you did.
Hey, Brad.
Yes.
Could you chime in?
Yes, the Brixmor property, the Tinnipark Plaza, would not qualify for the Cook County incentives, the 7B, in part because it is all under one pin, and while they have the vacancy there, they would not be able to get it for the entire shopping center, based, you know, just based on some vacancy in parts of the center. And it also, one of the key components of the 7B is a change of ownership, which does not occur here. And-
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
That makes sense, thank you for explaining that perfectly.
Thanks for clearing that up, Brad. Is there anything, Dave, you'd like to add?
I mean, just to, and it really, Andrew and Brad said a lot of this, but the 7Bs, the purpose, again, as we know, Cook County taxes are way out of whack for businesses. That's an equalizer, but it doesn't help in terms of the redevelopment of the center. We've got two sides of the street that, through the naked eye, you can see are very antiquated, have lots of vacancies, and to really make the change, and to make that corner, our northern, you know, corner, the jewel that it should be, we really need to make this Tiff, and, you know, we've had some initial discussion with the local taxing bodies, they're in agreement. Obviously, they'll have formal input through the joint review board process, where I'm sure we'll get additional input as to, you know, how we can make this plan the best plan that exists.
Thanks, Dave. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, do you mind if I take the floor, President Protem Glotz?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just looking over this report, I think this is an incredible opportunity for a Tiff District. Just looking at some of the numbers, we're currently at an EAV of 53 million per year, and they're estimating between 115 and 145 EAV, that's millions of dollars in EAV, at the end of the 23 years of the Tiff. I think there's an opportunity to really leverage that to take advantage of some of the blights that are in this area, and I know this report laid out that we qualify for, I want to say like four of the seven, or four of the six, blights, and so I think it's a great opportunity, and then, most notably, I think there were some environmental concerns that we can also address in this area. I know there was three pins with underground tanks, two of them already have been remediated, and there's a third one there. I think using these types of Tiff funds to make that area and the public safer in that area is a great opportunity for the redevelopment of this area, using Tiff as kind of the economic engine for that. So, I'm excited about it and looking forward to the public hearings.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else?
No, I have to agree with Mike.
Great, thanks, Bill.
Can I, this is Trustee Galante, can I have a minute?
Sure, go ahead, Diane.
I just want to say I agree with, you know, everything Mike is saying, also, you know, one thing, I will, you know, Trustee Berg is, I feel a little better with Tiffs is the way we now look at how we, how we, we use them, and we're not pre, giving out, pre-funding anybody, we're sharing in the Tiff funds after the fact, and I think the way they set it up is, you know, very safe for everybody. There's nothing to give out, you know, then we're not going to be at risk, and hopefully that's how we continue to look at the projects as they, as they come. But I agree, we need, we need to do this for, to redevelop that area. It just, there doesn't seem to be any other way to get it to happen, so, thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Diane. I'll make a motion to move it to the board, I have a second. I'll make a motion to move it to the board, I have a second? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Roll call vote for item seven, trustee Berg.
No.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, receive comments from the public. Is there any public members present that would care to address the committee of the hall?
Not for the panel.
Are there any written public comments or requests to speak telephonically received?
No.
Thank you, Laura. Well, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn the special committee of the hall at 7:36?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Chris, and motion carries. It is 7:36 on the village clock.